I would like to call this meeting to order, the July 18th Pickle City Schools Board of Education Meeting, and let's start, Jeremy, we call roll.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Here.
Mrs. Mars.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
All right, everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we, first thing we have to do is approve the agenda. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda. Do we have a second? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, agenda is approved. Next thing is approval of the minutes. Everyone received the minutes from last week's, or last month's meetings on June 27th. Seeing any additions or corrections, please let us know. If not, I will take a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second, we have Steve and JoJo. All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the June 27th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, minutes are approved. We have nothing for the hearing of the public for agenda items, and we will jump right into the treasurer's agenda with Jeremy.
My, mine is going to be very short this evening, more stuff further down the agenda, but we closed the month of June exactly where we expected to be for the fiscal year, and so we ended our 17th year in the black, so that's good news, so.
How many years?
Seventeen.
They should give awards out for 17 years.
Seventeen years.
Just finished number seventeen, so yes, it's a good deal.
Well, good, that's awesome.
So, that is all wrapped up, we've closed the month, and we've started our new fiscal year, and then the two fund-to-fund transfers are on there are just to close out to accounts, there's a few cents in there, and so it's just to move it out of there, so that we don't keep open things that are active, so, those are the only two things they have on there.
All right, any questions for Jeremy? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the treasurer's agenda.
So moved.
JoJo, do we have a second?
Second.
Will we give this one to Steve?
Sure.
All right, now Jeremy, will you please call roll?
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right, moving now to superintendent's report.
Thank you, you know we worked a really, really long time on trying to get the STEM program K through 12 throughout our district, we already had it K through three, and then we had it the junior high on up, we are able to now add that to our fourth through sixth grade program, so Scott's here to talk about our STEM program, and how we're doing that addition, and some of the things we're putting in that program, so.
And I won't take a long time, but I did want to make sure I highlight, some of the new things we're able to offer here, as Mr. Thompson said, we had a lot of STEM programming in grades seven through 12, everything from drone piloting through pre-engineering, and through work with Edison in Upper Valley. We, around three years ago, were able to bring STEM programming for all students in grades K-3, so all of those students are able to work with robotics, and programming, and building, and design, and all these really, really amazing things. The gap was in our four, six area, to the point where we had students leaving grade three and basically saying, where's my, where's my STEM things that I've been doing? So this coming year, we're very fortunate, we will be able to offer that in grades four through six, and I wanted to make sure I highlighted some of the things that students will be able to do, so that you understood the significance of that. We do operate all of our K, or K-3 and then we four, six STEM programming with that concept of design engineering, meaning, I really think through how I'm building things and constructing. We adhere to the 5E approach, which is to engage kids, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate, they do all of those things. We also work with the three STEM pillars, and I wrote all these things here for you, which are knowledge, tools, and skills, we want kids to be able to work with all of those different ideas when it comes to STEM. The other really important part is, it's important to understand that these STEM skills that we are working on in grades K-12 are career skills, so when I have kindergartners who are, and our kindergartners do this, program robots to follow colored cards around their classroom, those are programming language skills, those are design skills that will produce students who have that capability when they graduate. Very, very excited on how we've designed this, we have three instructors, the two K-3 instructors, I'm not sure if anyone knows this, are both STEM fellows, they've been through the Dayton Regional STEM Program two years ago, to the point that they were second in the region as far as a recognition of their work in the classroom. So our new teacher, we won't do that this first year, this, this will be a learning year, the plan will be for her to engage with the Dayton Regional STEM Center in year two, so that she will go through the STEM Fellowship Program as well, just to strengthen those skills that she would have. This new program is on the third floor, what was the library at Pickle Central, we've taken that library and condensed it into two, if you went up there right now, you would see a lot of really exciting things that are waiting for our students to try, I've listed a few, we have eight 3D printers in that classroom, we added four new ones this year, we have LEGO robotics for them to work with, so our students in K-6 will follow the complete sequence of LEGO robotics programming, meaning our kindergartners work with it, and we advance that as they move up through K, or grade six and beyond, they actually use those same tools when they hit junior high and high school. We have for, the fourth through sixth graders, we have two first LEGO league tables up there, each of those has about a dozen different challenges for kids to try, for example, a challenge may be, I need to build an autonomous robot that can go and push a lever, move a machine, and pick something up, come back to me, all of it is programmed without me, I need to be able to make it do that, and our kids will be able to do that. We work with snap circuits, if you've never worked the snap circuits before, they're fantastic, we will work with the concepts of electricity, we work with them in K-3, they will work with them in four, six, and we advance it up through seven, 12, so they will work on, focusing on how light works, so students will be able to understand how circuitry works, capacitors, how those sorts of things work, how resistors, you name it, transistors, they do all of those things. We do use Vernier, it's a company that uses sensor learning, we will start that in grades four through six, that continues all the way through high school. So we will use, at four, six, we will use what are called wireless crash carts, they work on Bluetooth signals right to the kids' Chromebooks, and we will work on some of the basic laws of physics when it comes to that. We do have STEM construction carts, you name it, we can build it, everything from tools to Play-Doh, to glue, the things where we actually design things, kids will have that experience. We will use a number of different curricular pieces, we will use one called Learning Blade that's available to all schools in Ohio, we will use components of Project Lead the Way, not all of it, we will use some of the strategies and challenges in there, we will use CS First, that's Computer Science First, that works with Google, and students will learn to do 3D, 3D design with a product called Tinkercad. Tinkercad is an offshoot of AutoCAD, if you've heard of that before, it's just to a lesser degree, so our students will be able to learn how to design in a 3D environment on their Chromebooks, and then take those 3D designs and manifest them with a 3D printer right in their classroom. So they walk out with something that didn't exist before they started, and they built it, again, all career skills. We even have straw rockets in there, because later on, they will talk about the concepts of rocketry, they will start building those with drinking straws that work on air pressure and not igniters, so we'll take them down to the gymnasium, and they will design rockets that will shoot across the gymnasium, it's actually really, really fun. On the back, I just did sort of a longitudinal look at the different things that students were able to do, again, we start with coding with K-3, the kindergartners use cards, by the time they walk out as third graders, if you ask them, hey, do you know how to make my, my pixelated design move three spaces to the left, all of them will tell you, I absolutely do, they can do those things, so we will continue that with four, six, and then when they get up to pre-engineering, they will learn how to do some very sophisticated programming. Robotics, again, we use a lot of LEGO robotics, a lot of people hear LEGO and think toys, these are designed to support that 5E design, design engineering process, these are machines that they're going to be building, and we go all the way up through drones, we have drone programs seven through 12, so our students are able to learn that kind of programming. Again, we use electronics all the way through, the junior high uses a really neat set that simulates your house, so they learn all of the electronic components that are in your, where you live, so they understand by the time they leave how doorbells work, how my ceiling fan works, how the lights in my house all work, and then we get more advanced as they go up. I'm really excited about the design and fabrication, we have second and third graders who are 3D printing, four, five, and six will get a little bit more autonomous when it comes to that, they will design it and learn how to actually use programming to get it to print, and then our high schoolers do some advanced things, and again, I talked about the curriculum that we use. The significant part here, and there are two pieces that I would like to make sure we appreciate, is that it is K-12, not every district can do that K-12, I'm very, very proud of the district for supporting that, and I put this on the front, it's for every student, and in many districts, there are STEM programs, but it might be an enrichment class, it might be a pull-out class, this is every student, we've designed it to be in a rotation with art, and music, and physical education, meaning, next year, every fourth grader will go through those STEM experiences, every fifth grader, every sixth grader, the same thing with the elementary, and seven and twelve, seven and eight, and then on through high school. That's significant, because we are able to build not only those skills, that confidence for those students to be able to enter into an ever-changing job market that is, that fluctuates, it seems like daily, our students will have had years of exposure to those sorts of learning and career skills, and I'm very, very proud of the district for supporting that, so. Any questions that I can answer for you, and you're welcome to come and play with any of these things, it'll be.
Is that the LEGO table right there?
That's, those, or which one are you looking?
Top left, or the, on the bottom?
Okay, so, seeing up there, that whole wall in the back, those are LEGO sets.
Okay.
And then those two things right there are, those are actually designed for just STEM design work, so there are gears, and ping pong balls, and feathers, and chenille craft sticks, and all kinds of things in there, and we have design challenges for kids to use those tools, so it may be, can you design a mechanism to balance two of these ping pong balls on top of something else? Go, you've got 12 minutes.
Okay.
Now, you need to work collaboratively to figure that out, so that's what those are, if you look, those others are, those are all 3D printers, I should, I didn't even mention this, we have three podcast booths in that fourth, fourth through sixth classroom, so kids can learn to do, and they will, do their own recording, how do podcasts work? All of those things are designed to help kids learn these skills while they're learning other things and working together.
So even at the high school level, where, you know, everything's not laid out for each student, these things are being integrated into their classes that they are required to take?
Absolutely, yep, so if you think about our high school, you know, we have two different types of aviation courses, one uses flight simulators and different kinds of flight science, the other is all drone-based, we have three different pre-engineering courses, everything from sort of an introduction all the way to an advanced engineering, we have jewelry making, which is a type of STEM activity, we have a full suite of Adobe classes, so kids can learn everything from Illustrator to Photoshop, to the type of software that governs how television works, and streaming stations work, so our students, K-12, have a wide, wide array of different experiences that they will have before they leave us.
That's amazing.
Awesome.
Yes, it is, it's, it's pretty neat to see, and I'm excited to, to bring it to our students, I think they'll really enjoy it. Excellent, well, thank you, very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to come and explore any of those that you'd like to, so thank you.
None of this would happen without him, by the way, he is not only passionate about it, but very knowledgeable, he's got a great science background, and that's to our advantage, but works with our teachers extremely well, and our teachers are amazing, if you ever get to see them in action, you would be very impressed, so, thank you Scott for all your work, behind the scenes and up front. I want to do our bullying report this month, we were going to do it last month, as you know, Tony wasn't able to attend the meeting because of emergency, had to attend to, but we're going to go ahead and do that this month, since we didn't get to do it last month, so, Mr. Lyons?
Thank you, for the second half of the year, generally through June, we had five total reports that ended up being validated as bullying, or actual events of bullying, that puts the total from the first semester and the second semester combined, thirteen total, interestingly enough, sometimes those were the same kid, not always different kiddos that we're working with, and that speaks to that threshold of intentional, persistent, repetitive behaviors to get to that point. Some of the things we noticed in our reports over the year, and especially the second semester, were, we noticed a lot of false reports, because second semester, what happens is, especially at the air media building, they come in and really hit the ground running with doing a training with kids every month, to make sure they're able to get in and get on, that's what gets most of that reported, so we have a lot of practice reports, which is great. The reason we do that is we saw uptick in behaviors that second semester, traditionally throughout the year, so they wanted to make sure they were getting that. We get a lot of duplicates, so one kid turns in, multiple children will turn in, which I think is great, too, that they're turning those things in, recognizing, turning them in. Offenses that are, that are not actually bullying are most, most of our reports that go into bullying, so kids will pick that as a dropdown, and it's, like I've mentioned this before, somebody called you, whatever, and that doesn't meet that threshold, but we can still deal with it, because we investigate all of them. And then offenses that occur off school property and on social media are, continue to grow, and we investigate them, do the best of our ability, now, they may not fit the threshold for us of, are we going to use discipline, or something like that, but we try to stay in communication with parents, so at least we're, we have dialogue about what's going on with those kinds of things, so, our process, as I mentioned before, is make sure we submit through public school works, principal receives it, we receive it, we'll communicate with them depending on what it is, the nature of it, and then the principals will determine whether or not it meets that threshold of bullying, and they'll start playing, and they'll do that for both kids, the kids impacted, and also the kid that's sexually bullying or accused, and make sure they monitor those.
I can't remember, did you share with them the Q code that the students came up with at high school?
You talked about it, you didn't have.
So that's particularly for the incidents of safety and security, we don't want them to not acknowledge that there's a, you're in that committee, that, what the question was, why aren't you turning things in, and they said that sometimes it's cumbersome to be able to get into the system and go through the steps, but if they had their phone and they could scan that, they could record it right now, so, they ran it kind of as a practice run, it seemed to be pretty good, and will come with that completely ready to go for next year, it works really well, I even showed the kids off before it works. Whether or not we'll get to a place where we're doing that here is something else, because of course, we don't want the kids at those grade levels to have their phones out, even because that creates a problem, but, that's a really good tool, and I think our current system of public school reporting, once you get to that grade level, the kids are doing it, at the primaries, if we get them, it's going to be word of mouth, or pushing the parent to get that information into the system, so, I will tell you, looking at last year's data, we saw less actual cases this year overall, which was, I think there's a little bit of something to be celebrated, and everyone can be maybe impacted, but it feels like the work is working, and the process is working, so. Questions?
No.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up on the thousand books before kindergarten, we had talked about that a couple board meetings ago, numbers continue to grow, and I didn't write the exact number, but I'm also on the public library board, and they were talking about how they're promoting it, and getting some good interaction with summer reading program there, too, but, today we had a young boy come in, he's, he's reached his 200th book, and is extremely, like, this, this kid was so excited, of course, the mom is thrilled that it's happening, too, last, like, two weeks ago, we had somebody come in for their 100th book, and, and we've got a grant through our partnership with Edison to buy books that we could give as incentives every benchmark they meet for 100 books, so, this student got to come in today, and, of course, Emily, you know, she's full of sunshine, she brings out this cart with all these books, and this kid just could not pick the perfect book that he wanted to take home for his forever book, so, just need to see that, that it's happening, and we want to continue to promote that, so, for our viewers at home, we want to, you know, continue to get kids pre-kindergarten to register for that process, and start that reading early.
Are the numbers up?
Yes, yeah, we're getting more and more kids registering for it, so it's great that we're partnering with the Pickle Public Library, because they're doing their summer reading program right now, and they're really able to get more connections to that population, where we don't have that direct contact with them yet, because they're not enrolled with us, so, getting those public connections are real important for us right now, so, we're looking at trying to get an event planned in April, we've got an idea that we're, we're working on, and we'll do that to help, again, usher in the next summer, and the summer reading program, we're hoping to get our reading mobile all put together, and do a great promotion at that point, so, we got that in the works. Finally, just want to introduce, officially introduce, our student representative, Spencer Ford, as you know, this is more for our viewers at home, but we have student applicants that come in, and you got to read through all of those, they were all anonymous, and then you went through and picked who that person was, and unanimously chose this young man, and I've known Spencer for a long time, and I can, I can attest that you made a great, great choice, so, Spencer, welcome to this board as a student rep, do you want to introduce yourself a little bit, and tell us some about what you do at the high school, and give us just a little bit of a brief introduction of yourself?
Sure. Hi, I'm Spencer, my dad is also on the board, right there, Mr. Ford, what I do at the high school mostly is I, I do a lot of things, I'm a part of the principal advisory board, which came up with the idea for the QR code, like Mr. Lyons said, I'm at the Upper Valley Career Center in the pre-engineering program, which is why this also spiked my interest a lot, I'm in cross-country show choir, this will be my fourth year show choir, and my sixth year of running cross-country, I don't do much other than that, I help out teachers, I plan on being an office assistant at the high school this upcoming year, other than that, I do not have much to say.
Excellent role model, we, I, again, I can attest, having known him for a long time, we, you guys have a great, great candidate here, so, I'm excited for you to get to work with him.
And in the interest of fairness, and for the public, I need to know that I abstain from that conversation, had nothing to do with him coming on.
It was all anonymous, so, you guys read them anonymously and chose who you wanted, so.
No, but you had a lot of good ideas, the things you wanted to do.
Thank you.
So, welcome, and that's all I have for my report.
All right, moving on to the superintendent's agenda.
Okay, we'd like to recommend the board approval of the attached list of donations, grants to Pickle City Schools, so we had some more come in for the Indian Nation Station, as well as the Wise Cup Honor Garden, marching band received one from the Pickle Veterans Association, which was greatly appreciated, and then through the grants, we have the Pickle Education Foundation, as well as the Tri-County Board covering mental health for our Hope Squad, so, really nice donations there, we appreciate that support, we can't do this without these kinds of generous donations, so, thank you to those people.
What happens to the donation, like the Wise Cup, was there a cap of what that cost, and then the?
Correct.
What if the donations go above of what that costs?
So, so we did not actually head that process up, we did it through here, just so we had a place for the funds to go, so they knew exactly how much they needed, and Tom Hudson, who headed that process up, only saw the amount needed, so it's not going to go above.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll go just right to that number.
Perfect.
Yep, good question. Recommend board approval of the following materials, do you want me to read all those, or can you see them?
Yeah.
Okay, it's what Mr. Bloom had presented to you earlier through an email, so, recommend board approval of those materials, and then recommend board approval of the attached list of the Pickle City Schools district free and reduced lunch policy, and food service department annual complaint report for the 24, 25th school year, we do that every year at this point, but as you know, we talked about it at the last meeting, that there will not be any charges for this upcoming year because of the CEP grant, we're thrilled to have that, that's a great opportunity for our kids not to worry about lunch money costs and those kinds of things, so, just a reminder, we do have to apply for it each year, and we have to qualify for it, so, it's, it's for sure next year, and then we'll have to continue to work through to see if we qualify, but I've already received really good feedback, so has Jen Garland, our food director, families that are very, very appreciative of that, that concept, so, that's a great thing for our parents and our students.
What does CEP mean again?
I can't remember what it stands for.
Community, inter, let me get it here, I have it. Community Eligibility Provision.
Community?
Eligibility Provision.
It has to do with our threshold for property level.
Okay.
Direct.
Does that include our students that go to JBS, too?
It's anybody who's, it's anybody who's enrolled with us full-time, not.
Not part-time?
And again, the number, I mean, the number really boils down to how many people are directly certified, so, when we get above a certain percentage, then it becomes viable for that to happen, that you can afford to do that, and direct certify means that the state's saying that the student is receiving state support through the program, so that's, once the district reaches a certain threshold, then we qualify, and that's how we end up, that's why we keep saying, like, it just, it's going to depend on if we qualify or not, because it all matters on how many, how many people are directly certified.
So is this the first year we applied for it, have we ever applied and been ineligible?
No, first year we were able to apply for it.
Okay.
We're committed to continuing that process as long as we're eligible.
Awesome.
It hasn't been financially viable in the past.
Okay.
Things have changed.
It's nice, it's really nice.
And that's all I have.
All right, now I need, any questions for Dwayne? If not, I will take a motion for the superintendent's agenda.
So moved.
Sean, we have a, okay, second, all right, Jeremy, we call roll?
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right, moving right along to the personnel agenda with Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, I think I mentioned in May that hopefully the July agenda would be a lot shorter than it is, thank goodness, I am only going to point out that we did have a couple of reservations in the last week or two, and getting close to wrapping those back up for, to have those be able to end up probably by the end of next week, and then we were able to secure a new PE teacher that's out of seven, Nicholas Crigger, or PCIS, I'm a little excited to get him up more, and that wraps up that building, and then two other positions have been missed, as far as that instructional side of things, and then you saw in there the food service movement that we had through the social service testing, and additional positions. Questions for personnel?
So we're, we're pretty, we've got the teachers we need.
Yeah, we're, I went through the list of curriculum yesterday, and we're in fantastic shape right now, to, to, even the kindergarten resignation, we have someone I didn't invite for that, so, we have some challenges with the guidance part, but interestingly enough, we have some folks that are in the process of becoming guidance counselors, and I also have internal people with guidance licenses right now that are interested, so, I start interviews on Tuesday for that, and I'm confident we'll be able to wrap it up.
Any questions for Tony? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion for the approval of the personnel agenda.
Chairman.
Kelly, we have a second?
Second.
All right, Jeremy, will you please call roll?
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right, moving on, no old business, we're going to move on to new business.
All right, the first item that we have on there is recommend board approval of the attached quote, purchase two new buses for Meyer Equipment, these buses are quoted through the EPC. These buses are quoted through the EPC, um, consortium that we belong to, and so, we didn't go out to bid, but they already did all the bidding part for us. I should note that the price of this bus has increased over $12,000 from last year when I asked you to approve the purchase of two buses. Um, so since I started here, which is now going to be 11 years ago, the first bus I purchased was $88,800, and now we're up to $128,858. So, um, they're not getting any cheaper. And actually, one of them is starting to install seat belts on every bus without you getting a say in that, and that price is even more extreme, so.
Are we getting seat belts on them?
We are not. That's a very touchy subject, and I don't even know, like, we're getting, somebody else is going to need to figure that part out because you'll have parents saying yes and no, and it'll just be a whole nightmare because how do you get a bunch of kindergartners off the bus if they're all strapped in?
Exactly.
Like, there's no answer to this. There's not a good, I mean, I like to believe-
I think it's like the state ruled the way it is.
Exactly.
The state determined it really was not the safest option at this point.
Yeah.
I mean, inside these buses, 99% of the time, it's like a ping pong ball inside, and it's, and it's all cushioned. We've had an incident where somebody went out a window, so then you can look at that. Is that, you know, is that, let's address maybe how, why the windows open versus trapping a bunch of people and you can't get off a burning bus?
We did not have that incident.
No, not us. No, I meant, that was the most recent thing that triggered all of this seatbelt stuff to happen. So, anyways, um, the bus price is $128,858 this time.
For one bus?
For one bus.
And we're going to get two.
So we, we've got to buy two every year.
Yeah, so the public knows we cycle two buses off every, every year, and that's why we keep our fleet-
We've done this for 30 years easily, like, this is a normal-
Do we trade in those two?
We do. Or, we do, or we'll sell on Gov. deals. Trade-in is not very good. We put them up on Gov. deals, and we usually get, like, four to five times as much as we would if we traded them in. Because people still want them to make into party buses or do whatever. I mean-
YMCA's.
If they, I mean, you've got to put a lot of money back into them when they get to this point. So one of the buses that we're getting rid of has a lot of, um, mechanical issues that, that we don't even run anymore, because it's just so expensive to try to fix everything that's wrong with it that it's not worth putting another nickel into. And then having to keep things compliant, there's, you know, it, there's a whole gamut of things. So, we, the mechanic and the transportation director go through and they pick out the, the worst two typically are the two oldest ones, but this year, we have one that's a little bit newer because it's having mechanical problems, so we're keeping one of our O9s. But we are still in rotation, so all is well.
All right. Any questions for Jeremy on that? We'll vote on these individually. Uh, so I'll need a motion to approve, um, the purchase of two buses from Meyer Equipment.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Jeremy, will you please call roll?
Mrs. Mars.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
The next item we have on here is, um, something that we've already discussed. We've already approved the purchase of playground equipment, so I'm coming back to you with the, so we needed to get that done quickly enough so that the equipment got here in time. And so now this is the scope of work for the site work, um, that needs to be completed at Washington and PCIS, um, and the installation of that equipment. So that total for those two buildings is $262,230. Um, and then Spring Creek will be on its way, but it's a little bit more complex. There's compaction, and it has to be done, and we're basically rerouting and creating a, a, um, swale to be able to carry water away from the playground because of the way the flooding and everything happens, the water that's out in that, that area. So, um, it's a little more complex, so you'll see that at some point, probably next month. They're trying to work on that right now.
Any questions for Jeremy on that?
Are these because the playgrounds that we had weren't so good, or are these new and better ones?
All the above. So, um, equipment ages out, it breaks, it becomes unsafe. Um, Sean Schumaker is a licensed playground inspector, and so there are things that he said needed to go. We also have an insurance company that identified things that they wanted to go. And, um, also, the playgrounds were built very small for the number of students that we actually have here because we didn't have any locally funded initiatives when we built the buildings. So this is actually expanding the footprint and adding more equipment than what we've had in the past. So it's doing multiple, it's hitting multiple things. And so, this, the money that we're using for this is coming out of the 034 account that's been set aside to maintain, um, the new facilities.
Oh, it's coming out of maintenance?
So, we have, that money's been set aside, and so, um, not something we want to do. They're very expensive, um, but when you're doing three playgrounds at once, and this is what I always worried about, like, we have three brand-new buildings, so that at some point, we're going to have three roofs that need replaced. So I'm already, I've been saving money like nobody's business to know that, like, someday down the road, they're going to need to replace three roofs and make sure that money's on hand so that we have that in place for it. But, this is going to be an every 10-year-or-so kind of thing where we're going to have to update playground equipment. It's just a, it's a normal maintenance issue.
Is this 10, year 10 for PCIS?
It is not year 10, but we're getting close.
Nine?
15, was it?
I think it was 15, so.
15 years old, please hear me?
No, 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 no.
2015.
Oh.
So, that's what I'm saying. We're, we're almost to the point where everything is 10 years old. So I'm just saying, like, as an average, that's what happens. And so, um, because this was bought under state contract, and it wasn't exactly what we would have normally bought if I were actually out there deciding what was getting purchased, it wasn't made as well as it could have been, and so there are things that did not last as long as they should. But-
Can I still ask another question, not, maybe not necessarily to any, to the playground, but the buildings themselves, they're still the right size. We're not, we're not, are we, they're handling everything space-wise, or are we short of space? Yeah, outgrowing the buildings yet in any way?
I would say that-
We're not.
We, we have enough room to do what we need to do. We, we would like to be able to move the preschool classrooms to a different location that we could get through the county. That would help free up some space that we need for our special ed services. So, that's on the wish list.
Student counts, we're not, we're not over.
We're not what?
We're not over by student count, no. We have some special ed rooms that are sharing space, and their, their working schedules were, like, some might be in, some of them, it'd be nice if they just had their own space, but otherwise, we don't have numbers of students-
I was just curious how it's worked out.